Okay, tonight, we're going to ask Neil Tomlin to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag.
Which it stands.
A nation.
Okay, Cal, let's do the, please.
Kim Connor.
Here.
Dennis Gagnon.
Here.
Peter Lewis.
Here.
Laura O'Connell.
Here.
Neil Tomlin.
Here.
Heidi Wendell.
Here.
Neil Zuckerman.
Here. Sounds like we have a quorum. Thank you, Kelly. All right. Good evening and welcome to the first meeting of the year 2021 for the Phillips Town Planning Board. Couple of introductory remarks. One, I hope it's everyone considers this a good day in America regardless of party Democrat or Republican or independent. We consider this a new beginning. I hope we take the words of the new president to heart about unity and public service and selfless service. And I take each of you who are on this board, you are proving the value of selfless service. The you put in far more than you get out and this community is, I hope, appreciates what you're doing. And more importantly, I think in keeping with our new president, you are here to serve the town. We're here to serve the town. We don't serve ourselves. We serve the town. And what you're doing is a selfless role and keeping that mindset. You don't serve anyone individually. You're serving the town's interests. And I appreciate what you're doing. I know the town board does and the public in general. So thank you for that. And to a, to a safer, more healthy and a far more successful 2021 for all of us. It's good to see everyone again. Okay, approval of the minutes for 2020, December 2020. Can I have a motion to approve those minutes, please?
Make that motion.
Thank you, Kim.
I'll second.
Thank you, Peter. Any discussion? Any additions? Any changes? Dennis?
I noticed Kim wasn't listed as being present.
Is that right?
I will add you, Kim. I'm sorry.
Thanks.
Good call, Dennis. Anyone else? Okay, can I have a, all favors say aye? Aye.
Aye.
Ours. Extensions. Okay, thank you very much. I did not mention, I'll say this at the beginning and I'll say this at the end. We have two upcoming meetings of import to the town, given the magnitude of the project. This is related to Garrison Golf Club and the desire to have the Hudson Valley Shakes first vessel become a tenant on that property. We have a site visit this Sunday at 9:30 a.m., which will meet in the parking lot where you, in the golf course parking lot. So 9:30 a.m. Sunday for all those who are listening here. And then we will have a special meeting this same bat time next Thursday, January 28th at 7:30, where the board will discuss, the board will discuss its observations from that site visit, which will not be short because we're covering a lot of terrain. I'll ask Steve Gab, our attorney, that is a public meeting, both are public meetings, but at the, at the meeting we're having on January 28th to discuss our observations. Is that, Steve, a something where the public can comment or is that solely for the board to comment?
Well, it's a, it's a work session and you haven't reached the point in the application where you're at a public hearing yet. So you really don't want to preempt the public hearing and have an open, you know, forum where we're just anyone could speak anything. Having said that, it's within the board's purview. If there's a particular issue that you would like to hear from the public on, they got something, traffic or visual impact, whatever it might be. And there's someone or some group of people in the audience that you would like to have little foretaste of what the issues are going to be on. Somebody maybe who's a neighbor who has some insight that you might not. The board has discretion to allow that person to speak if they wish to do so. So you have a fair amount of discretion, but again, it would be improper to hold a, if you will, premature public hearing on the matter. So keep it to the board, keep it to the applicant would be my advice. And if there's some particular issue or a party who you want to, you know, as a favor allowed to speak, then that certainly do that. But I would, I would be clear that it's going to be limited and not, not just an open floor.
Okay, very good. Anyone have any questions on that topic? Okay, thank you. Then we'll move on to the Mark Khan. I don't know if it's pronounced Khan or Cone, application, but who is representing the Cone? Maybe they can just tell me how to pronounce it first. Khan.
I believe Glenn Watson might be.
Glenn Watson. Glenn, we can't see you and you're on mute. Maybe not Glenn. Could we have?
It'd be David Obuchowski.
Yeah, it's not, it's not I, right?
Okay, sorry, sorry.
Let him in.
I just let him in.
Okay, David.
Hello, everyone. Hi. I do have a couple of co attendees today. I wonder if we could have admitted the landscape architect, Liz Campbell Kelly. Do you see her in attendance there? And okay, and Jason Snyder is our civil engineer from Baden Watson.
He's also on.
And and I'm not sure if Mark Khan is on also. He's the homeowner, the property owner.
I just let him in also.
Thank you very much. Okay. Shall I proceed then?
Yes, please, Mr. Obuch. How do you pronounce your last name, please?
Yeah, sure. It's Obuchowski. I'm the architect for the project.
All right, Mr. Obuchowski, go ahead, please.
Thanks. So, so this is a presentation of our, for a 2,000 square foot, single family residence on an approved lot along Route 403 in between 90 and nine. This is the existing conditions. It's currently an unoccupied lot. There are no wetlands. Max Carfunkel has inspected the site already. And we have DOT approval for a new driveway, which work has begun on already. This is the analysis of slope, the steeper, steeper slopes in this area of the site and our proposed driveway coming in off of 403 utilizes a portion of an abandoned roadbed that, that weaves along 403 there at the entrance and then comes up across grade to the house site, which is located here within the setbacks. We're not asking for any variances of setbacks on, on any side of the, the project property. This is the general, a general overview of the organization and location of the house as well as the overall disturbances that we anticipate around the site. Our septic area is in front of the house, just downhill from the house site itself. As I mentioned, the driveway sits on and a portion of things, an existing roadbed and then is graded up towards the house site proper. There's a carport and, and then entry, two bedrooms organized around three major trees that we've, we've tried to sort of organize the house around several existing site features and, and in particular, several trees that are on site. The, the grading and organization of the house has been set up to work with the existing grades as much as possible. There are no basements proposed. It's all slab on grade and we've, we've established three separate floor levels for the house in order to meet adjacent grades. So this, I'll zoom into this area so we can see a little more closely. The carport and entry is at 436. So coming in right at natural grade here. The bedroom patio and main living space is at 434. So it's, it's cut into the site about two feet on the backside. And then the bedroom on the front side here is down a couple of feet further. Again, to meet natural grade. We've been working with the rural site principles as much as possible. And then I know that's one of the things that it raises is this idea of trying to work with existing grades and contours as much as possible. And this gives you a sense of the, the general conditions of the site, the slope up from 403. These are the three trees I mentioned that were, were working around. So the house is organized around the back of these three trees. This is from the street side facing up. This is a rendering to give you a sense of the scale from the street and the, the way the massing is broken up to try to break up the house as much as possible and keep the, the views, the, the size of the house down as, as much as possible. As you can see, the main living space is pushed back to the backside of the site here. This is the tallest portion of the, the house here, which is at about 24 feet to primarily to allow clear stories for light into the living spaces. These are a couple of sections, just to give you a sense of how we've tried to organize the house on the site so that it, it sort of nestles back into the, the, the ground as much as possible, given the conditions and the general setbacks around the property. And again, this, this gives you a sense of the, these are the maximum heights at the, at the front portion well within the allowed heights. These are some progress photos of the driveway. Again, we have DOC approval for this driveway and construction has begun. The main roadbed has been graded and we're, the contractors are in the process of building stone retaining walls, working with many of the, trying to match as much as possible, the existing stone walls that happen along 403 here. We're, we're reusing, as you can see, stone. You can see it collected here on site throughout the project. We intend to keep all materials on site and reuse those as much as possible for things like retaining walls, also site features within the site where we're intending to recreate as much of the natural landscape as possible. Our landscape architect is, will, will speak to that some more in a minute. These are just some general overview notes on site protection and silt fencing. We can talk to that more if, if need be. And this is an example of the site lighting we anticipate. We're trying to keep this all dark sky compliant and have very minimal low level lighting at, at grade level. Again, Liz will talk, speak to this a bit more. So I, I'm just going to share a couple of other things about the, the design in the house itself. And then Liz can get some, some insight into the, the landscape design and buffers. So we've, we're intending to install a very high performance envelope and a green roof as well on the main living quarters. That, that's both for site water retention and aesthetics from, especially from above on Old West Point Road, looking down here and also to help with our thermal performance. Obviously, we are using energy efficient mechanical systems as much as possible and intend to reduce the carbon footprint as much as we can with the house. And the this septic, I should also mention that the septic and the well have been approved by the health department already, exactly with this particular footprint, house footprint and this particular septic and well location. So with that, I will turn the presentation over to Liz Campbell Kelly, our landscape architect, to give a, give an explanation of the planting strategies.
Hi, thanks. Thanks for having us. So this is the kind of schematic landscape plan that has various aspects of the site. So as you, next to the roadway on the slope there, we'll use some slope stabilizing shrubs. And along the driveway, as it's being constructed, you know, we're having areas that have been graded and we're going to be adding seed mixes of sedgees and grasses as well as native shrubs and understory trees around the driveway. In between the septic meadow with shrub buffer and the slope stabilizing shrubs, we have some woodland screening. So one thing of the site is that it's, you know, part of this woodland slope and we would like to kind of beef up the quality of the woodland. And I'll get into this a little bit on further slides, but doing that through restoration type planting. So I'll look at that as well. On the edge of the septic meadow, I, we have a layer of a kind of buffer of clonal shrubs. And those will perform kind of like a thicket. So it will be provide some separation between that meadow over the septic field and that area. Then just like around the kind of where the parking area for the driveway is, we're continuing a woodland restoration. And then to the kind of left of it on here, we'll have, start to introduce some where the woodland garden is, some more kind of garden-esque plants. And that will still include native species, but used to more kind of ornamental. But still kind of like artfully and evocative of native kind of species. And the ground covering plain would be, you know, native sedgees and ferns and things like that. And then around it, we have more of this kind of woodland restoration type planting, especially kind of screening to neighbors' houses. And we're including some canopy trees that will, you know, take a while to kind of mature and match the canopy that's existing there, but we'll get there eventually. Can you go to the next slide, David, please? This is kind of just backing up a little bit and just to like, kind of explain a little bit of our process of looking at the onsite plant communities. So, you know, from a regional context, as we all know, we're within the Appalachians and the Hudson Highlands as a subsect of the Appalachians. And so then from that kind of grouping in the middle, you see the, from the Phillips Town Biodiversity Report, this map, some of the local plant communities, which is a really amazing resource that the town has. And so the plant communities will form within the Hudson Highlands based on kind of site specific conditions of slope elevation aspect, and they will form. What will arrive is as kind of a natural plant community that has been developed over hundreds, thousands of years and and is here and remnants basically are here now. As we all kind of know, like all these landscapes that are close to roadways are, you know, impacted. And so, and we're impacted by deer and all the kind of climate issues and bug issues that we've all seen. So some of the, like the full plant community isn't quite there. And that's kind of the reasoning for this kind of restoration type. So in my process, what we do is we'll look at those basic plant communities, then we'll try and match what we're seeing on site with site specific observations. So in that kind of middle section at the bottom, we'll see like, these are species that we have been mapped in the survey and also observed on site. And then we start to think about the kind of ecological functions of the site because it's been disturbed. It's not like a simple, oh, we're just going to restore this forest to what it is. But we also have priorities such as, you know, dealing with stormwater in a responsible way, stabilizing slopes, providing screening, creating wildlife habitat is a key priority and also all kind of with the context of deer and invasive species. Can you go to the next slide, please, David? So these are the kind of landscape type communities that are referenced in the plan. So the woodland restoration is, there's a little bit of text there that kind of talks about, kind of what we've just been talking about, about restoring or attempting to bring back species that are a part of those original kind of plant communities. And of course, those, what we can plant now, you know, because of climate change, we make certain adjustments of what we think will be successful now, you know? You know, there is a beautiful old hemlock on the site and that's something that is, you know, is difficult to kind of restore because of the insect issues that that has. And the woodland garden in the lower left hand corner, there's just this kind of an evocative image of, to give the sense that this is, you know, a kind of, you know, artful interpretation of a native woodland. So we'll use native species and be kind of very less, you know, kind of simple and textural and beautiful. And the green roof images up ahead, as David mentioned, it's helpful for thermal load. It also is a great opportunity for habitat pollinators. The image on the left is from Manitoba. So kind of looking at very local inspiration points. And that's kind of the idea. You have a green roof that's in the middle of a woodland clearing, basically. And also will absorb stormwater as well. And then the meadow over the septic field will be the idea of a woodland clearing meadow. So this is the one example on left is a woodland clearing meadow. The one in the middle is an example of a meadow seeded over a septic field also in Phillips Town in the village of Cold Spring. And then the image on the right is also kind of meadow type planting. I include it as well because one of the key strategies we'll use for the kind of woodland restoration is to add pioneer species, so fast growing species that will come in quickly. And one of those is gray birch. Okay, get the next slide, please, David. And so in terms of, you know, restoration of project of this type, like a lot, a huge part of the project is just kind of construction methodology. And so when we establish our priorities, they are to protect the mature trees. David mentioned the three trees that the house is being built around. Those are, you know, very mature sugar, sugar maple trees. So you know, part of our strategy will be to establish strict but realistic tree and site protection and no go zones. So we have to work with the contractor when they're selected to make sure that they're on board with that. Limit disturbance and compaction of site soils. So using like arborist wood chips to cover areas that will be traversed by machinery. And then once areas are disturbed, like as in this driveway restoration, you know, we'll add, we have a methodology. So add a cover crop right away with erosion control blanket through the next growing season. We'll monitor for weeds, we'll treat for any invasives. And then the long-term planting would be installed. And because the, you know, the, it's a woodland soil, the highest level of success will come from small plant material. So on the right, these are pioneer tree gray birch in a small container. So we're thinking about initially having, you know, small material planted, but with fast growth rates. So gray birch, you know, two feet a year, white pine, two to three feet a year. And then a healthy use of tublings, which are, you know, little small plants with a very small root ball, but that we can plant, you know, hundreds of them and try and beef up the kind of the depth of layered of layers within the landscape. And so, yeah, so we'll use seed mixes, landscape plugs and some clonal shrubs will hopefully suppress weeds. There's a bunch of still grass on the site. So the strategy is to use the clonal shrubs to kind of hold back the still grass. I think, is that the last slide, David? Yeah, okay, so.
Okay, are you guys, David, Liz, anything else to present?
No, I don't believe so.
Okay, I feel like we just watched HGTV here. That was very, very thorough explanation of the planting. Thank you for that. All right, Ron, anything you want to talk to us about? Ron, you're on mute. And maybe David, you can remove the screen, the.
Sure.
Go ahead, Ron.
Thank you. As I said, this is the first opportunity the board's had to see the project. So there's some administrative things that you initially wish to do. It's a residential site plan project. So typically first declare, clarify the action and it represents a minor site plan pursuant to your regs. So that matter could be addressed tonight. There's various referrals that are necessary. It lies on 403. Referral to the county planning board is necessary. And there will be some disturbance of regulated slopes. So that typically warrants a referral to the conservation board, just so they're aware of it, should they wish to make any comments. Thirdly, with respect to seeker, since it's a residential project, it represents a type two action pursuant to seeker. And if the board is so disposed, you can actually classify it as such tonight. And that would conclude, conclude your secret responsibilities. And then lastly, the board should discuss whether they wish to have a site inspection, just to evaluate any site specific issues that may warrant evaluation during the review approval process.
Thank you. Thank you, Ron. Steve, anyone?
I think Ron's right on point. The only thing I'd add is you might want to consider refer up to local fire department courtesy.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Mr. Khan, did you want to say anything? No? Okay, fine. Board members, questions? Peter, go ahead.
I was just curious, when you mentioned treating invasives, how you intend to do that?
I think it's, it depends on what it is. There's a lot of still grass on site. So we might do some experiments with propane weeding and cutting at the right time of year, et cetera. It's still quite early in the project. So we haven't gotten that far yet.
Okay, I was just curious if it was a kind of a roundup affair or something, you know, a little bit more gentle on the, the soil.
Yeah, I understand. I think if there's a lot of barberry that's on site. So if, if glyphosate is ever used, it would be in the context of a cut stem. So you would cut at the base and then paint precisely. So there would be no spraying, yeah.
Questions? Oh, sorry, Peter, go ahead.
No, no, all from me.
Others?
Real quick, Ron, you mentioned a referral to the conservation board. That was under what grounds? Why are we going there?
17536B. When there's disturbance of steep slopes.
Okay. Okay, thanks.
Kim?
Okay, so I have a few questions. Um, it's within the scenic protection overlay entirely. Is that correct? So Ron and Steve, you, what's, what does that mean?
Well, that, you know, specifically limits the house height and you have some, some discretion on whether you want additional plantings along the street to minimize visibility. But obviously you've seen the proposed planning plan. It could be a matter that you evaluate should you wish to make a site inspection as well.
Okay. So there are no variances required. It's okay to build in this slope. Okay. This is a really small lot.
Right.
Good, based on current zoning. And so I've heard it's been stated a few times that this is an approved lot. Is that it's a pre-existing lot that was approved before the current zoning?
Yes, it's an existing lot as long as all they meet, all of the current, the existing setbacks, they're allowed to build.
Okay. So because it's a small lot, it's near neighbors' houses. And I don't know what the county's processes for approving wells and septic, but I would like to know where the neighbors' wells are. Just in case they're within, whatever that, is it 500 feet boundary?
It's within 200 feet, they would be of interest.
Okay. Like to see a copy of the driveway permit and also the copy of the Phantom County Department of Health approval. That usually comes in with a packet. Is that right? When we have those things? Yeah.
We don't, we don't have them yet.
Okay. And then couple of things. As far as the shrubs that are going to go along the main road, we would just want to be sure that they don't grow to block the sight line so that people can exit without, you know, not being able to see where they're going. And in addition to that, I'm curious about why the second bedroom is detached from the house. You know, why it's on the other end of a walkway. I'm wondering, is there a bathroom there? If someone stays in that part of the house, you know, do they have to walk to the main house to, you know, use the bathroom and, you know, because this you know, use the bathroom and, you know, because this looks like an Airbnb sort of situation. So we have to ask that question.
I see. It, it does have a bathroom, yes. Uh, ba- basically it's organized so that there's a courtyard there in between the two spaces, but it's, it's not intended to be an Airbnb or anything like that. It's just to have guests have a little bit of privacy when they're visiting, Mark. That's, that's the way it's arranged.
So then it, are you, what, what kind of heating are you, there's no central heating between the main house and?
Correct. We're, uh, very likely going to be using, uh, ductless mini, ductless split systems, um, and probably radiant floor heating as well, since it's live on grid.
Okay. Okay. So that is, um, I think the limit of my question.
Okay, others? Anyone else? Laura? No? Heidi? No? Uh, I, I did have one, Dennis, sorry, Dennis, anything? No? I, I have one question, and I guess it relates to one of Kim's, sorry, I'm having some bad internet connection this evening. I was surprised driving by a number of times in the last few weeks about the driveway because I hadn't heard about it, hadn't seen it, the information. And so I, it seemed, it feels atypical that, uh, a road is put in and, and finished before we hear about it or see it. I recall a number of areas where we've gone and where they've made rough it in, but they haven't finished it yet. Would be good to see, A, just understand that sequencing, Ron, about the driveway permitting, just so maybe a refresher for us as a board. And then I do want to see that driveway information.
It lies along a state road, so, um, the state DOT is going to respond, uh, I presume upon the filing of a highway permit application. If it was any other road, we would typically have heard about it.
Just as, as an aside, we, we can, we will provide you with the DOT permits that have been obtained already.
Great, okay.
I guess I have one more question. I'm sorry. So this house is under 35,000, 3,500 square feet or under 3,000, I can't remember what the limit is. Why, why are we here? Is it the amount of disturbance? Is it the slopes? Is it?
Yes. You know, particular protection overlay district. When you're building anything within it, you have to cover site plan.
Right, okay. Thanks, Steve.
Any questions? All right, let's go through our, our administrative tasks. So can I have a motion to declare this a minor, minor project?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Peter. Second?
Second.
Second, all in favor, say aye. Opposed? Abstentions, thank you. All right, let's make referrals, a mask for blanket, a referral to the county planning, conservation and fire departments. So can someone make that motion, please?
I'll make it.
Thank you, Kim.
Second.
Thank you, sir. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, abstentions, thank you. Um, I guess type two to secret, we have to declare that, is that right, Ron?
Right, you really have to classify as a type two secret action. That'll conclude your responsibilities.
Great.
I'll make that.
Thank you.
I'll make that motion.
Dennis, we'll call you the second. All right, any discussion?
Aye.
All right, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, abstentions. Okay, site inspection. Straw poll, how do we feel about one? Uh, we typically do one. I think that's a good process. I think the proximity to neighbors, Kim's point makes a good one, that I think there's value in in transparency and friend, and comity among new neighbors probably too. So, um, for your, for yourself, Mr. Khan. So, uh, this Sunday, we're obviously busy and we can't notice it in time. We'll be the next weekend where we can barely notice it, Kelly.
We can do the seventh.
Neil, it should be a motion for, Neil, it should be a notion, a motion for a site visit.
Yeah, let's first, sorry, I, thank you. Before we do the dates, fair. Okay, can I have a motion for any, motion for a site visit, please?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Peter. Second. Thank you, Laura. Any discussion? Anyone opposed to a site visit? Okay, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, abstentions, thank you, sir. All right, so how are we feeling about February 7th?
Because the 14th is Valentine's Day and I think.
It is, and love, love will pervade the land on that day. So, uh, the 7th feels like a good date. Okay, 9:30 on the 7th?
Just for the board's knowledge, I'm going to be undergoing knee replacement surgery on February 2. So I'll obviously not be available, but I will, I will conduct my own site visit in advance and provide you with my comments, so you'll have them available when you go out.
Well, Steve, we love you very much and we would be happy to carry you across that business. The least we can do, I mean, Ron, sorry. The least we could do, would you like, best, best of luck to you, Ron. Okay.
Thank you.
Give your apologies to the attendees. All right, 7th of, uh, February.
Sorry, uh, sorry, Neil, is, um, is it, is there anything that we want to, want to see staked out for this site, for the site visit? Are there any, I'm just throwing it out for the board, if there's any areas that we feel we want to have the applicant stake out, whether it's the footprint of the building or the driveway or you know, sort of some visual aids for the visit?
Yeah, you've mentioned this before, Neil, and I think it's a good thing to prompt the applicant. It definitely helps getting the corners in. So I, I think if we could ask David or Mark or to mark the corners, at least that would probably help us.
We can definitely do that. We have, we have some preliminary stakes and we'll just make sure those are completely accurate.
Great, thank you for raising, Neil. Okay, I think we've done our duty on this one, so move on to the next process. Anything else? Anyone? Great, all right, thank you very much. Good luck, Mr. Khan. We'll talk soon. All right, uh, now onto the Cummings approval for the lot line adjustment. Ron, you want, Ron and Steve, you want to, you want to say anything to introduce this?
Again, the project, uh, the board understands is a lot line adjustment to existing parcels owned by a couple. They're just, uh, modifying the lot line, so the one property that has two houses on it currently will, uh, convey the, will modify the lot line so the properties lie on separate parcels. That's the intent of variance was necessary from the ZBA. That's previously been obtained. They've come back before your board, you've had a public hearing. So you're now ready for action.
Do you need anything to add?
No, you have the resolution before you.
Yep, okay. Has everyone seen the resolution received from Ron earlier this week? Okay, what's, if I'd like a motion to, uh, to approve this resolution, or at least allow me to sign on our behalf, this resolution?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Peter. Kim will call that a second. All right, any discussion on this? Anyone? Okay, all in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions, okay, thank you very much. All right, next, I will be recusing myself and handing the virtual gavel to our first vice chair, Kim Connor, for the review of the Desmond Fish Library site visit. Kim, I hand the controls to you.
Thanks. Okay, so we had our site visit on Sunday. I guess the next thing to do would be to go to Ron to talk about the site visit?
Okay, yeah. Obviously, we just had the site visit on Sunday. I've developed a memorandum trying to summarize comments or, or matters of interest to the board at the time. The applicant was with us. Just so the board understands, necessary referrals have already been made. The app has already been before the conservation board, because they, they will be involved in permitting for the limited wetland impacts that are shown on their site plan. So the matters identified, I think the board can, or the applicants can easily resolve with the conservation board. And I think at this point, they're ready for scheduling a public here.
Does anyone have any questions? Based on our site visit? No? So I have just one question, which, um, which we didn't really touch on, or maybe you touched on it before I got there. About how to, we talked about how to protect, whether or not it was necessary to protect the solar panels from being stolen. But, um, I, I don't remember what protects the solar panels from being touched by people walking around. And whether or not that is, um, dangerous. So that is just one question that I wanted to bring up. Maybe, I don't know.
Can you hear me? Is Mike on?
Yeah, can you, Kelly, let Mike rouse in?
Anita Prentice is also on.
I know Mike's their solar expert, so.
Yeah, he's on.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, wonderful. Yep, so that's been a concern since the beginning of, uh, sort of site development. You know, sorry, my kids are in the background. The, uh, the sort of path forward that we resolved was, um, installing, I think it's called solar scrim, if that's right. Anyway, it's, it's sort of like a cage around the back of the panels where the wires would be exposed. So first of all, I should say the wires will be in conduits and buried. And then you have a single wire coming from the back of each panel, you know, into that collection wire. Um, and to protect that, there'll be this product added to the back of the panels. You know, these panels are generally going to be installed fairly low to the ground. And there'll be plantings behind the panels, I believe. So it'll be difficult to get under there to begin with. And but then secondly, you know, should someone get under there, they won't be able to access any wiring because of this add-on product that we're into the project.
Okay, great, that's exactly the answer. Does anybody else have any questions? No? Um, in that case, um, Steve, do you have anything to add?
No, if the, um, site visit did not yield any, um, significant issues, proposed changes to the draft site plan you've received, I think it's appropriate to forward the scheduling of the hearing.
So would anyone like to make a motion to schedule a public hearing? Or I suppose it will be February?
I'll make the motion.
Laura, first, second, Peter, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Motion carries, any abstentions? Motion carries. Okay. So I think that's it for this meeting.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Anita.
Thank you for coming to the site visit, too.
It was fun. All right, so we'll hand it back over to Neil.
Him, you have a lot of fun doing things that other people would not say are a lot of fun, but God bless, God bless them.
I've been stuck in my house for months. What are you talking about?
Fair, 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 fair. Okay, speaking of fun, we're going to now have a discussion of CRS. Peter liked that one. I know how to have fun too, Peter.
Nice segue.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. Um, I mean, but we have the resolution. I, 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 we're ready for a vote. I don't know if Glenn, you have any you know, parting comments to make before we do that? You seem ready to say something. I take that as a no. All right, Glenn does not want to say anything. Glenn, you're back on mute if you're trying to speak. I can't tell.
I I usually get a copy of the resolution after you get it. So I don't, I haven't seen it, so I don't have any comments.
Okay.
I'd like to hear what it is.
Well, I can email it to you right now. And we could, we could, we could actually move on to River View while you read it and come back to that. I don't have a problem with that.
Well, you have to move on to somebody else because I got River View, too.
Okay, well, that you're, that's it tonight.
Ron could just hit the highlights of it, I just, just one.
Ron, give the highlights to family.
Okay, yeah. It's our standard form approval. It's, um, let's see, one grants a special permit for the, for the limited.
How about I just do this? How about I just do this? For giggles, oops, sorry, I did that on television, apologies. I will just put it on the screen and you can just look at it. We have the technology. Glenn, just tell me when to keep going down.
You could just get to the that's, that's all just.
On page two, there it is.
Yeah.
And Glenn, I apologize, I had monumental problems with my computer today, or you would have seen.
Yeah, you're right. This working at home isn't, is, uh, really got its, got its issues, like taking out the garbage.
Keep reading, Glenn, keep reading.
DOT. Yeah, that's standard stuff, that's, that's fine. Yep.
Okay. All right. I'm gonna stop sharing my screen. Okay, so what we're gonna do, folks, is we're gonna go in sequence. I'm gonna go in, uh, for kicks, reverse alphabetical order with me going last. I mean, I'll let, I'll start with Heidi. No, I'm, I'm, I'm not gonna, I'm gonna wait till everyone goes through as the chair's prerogative. I'll start with, with Heidi, and then we'll go in reverse alphabetical order from there. So go, we go Heidi and Neil and Laura and Peter, Dennis and Kim. And so what I'll do is I'll ask for a motion first for this, well, second, and then we'll have a discussion. And then you can each go ahead and, uh, just do your vote along the way. We'll just take it in order. Okay, so can I have a motion for, uh, this resolution, please?
Neil, you have two, two resolutions. The first is the secret resolution, and the second is the approval. You really should do separate votes.
Fine, we'll, we'll start with the approval. Do you mind if we start with?
Oh, you guys start with the secret.
Fine, we'll start with the secret then. Uh, that one, I think we can do as a blanket. So can I have a motion on the secret resolution, please?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
The neg deck, I should just be obvious. Okay, all right, any discussions? Okay, no, are all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, extensions, okay. All right, now, now a motion on the resolution, thank you, Steve, uh, for approval of the, of the project. You have a motion for that, please?
Still moved.
Okay, second?
I'll second.
Okay, Peter. All right, discussion and voting. So we're gonna go in sequence and start with Heidi.
I, I vote no.
Anything you want to say, or you just?
I, I, it's for the same reasons that I've previously stated several times, so I don't want to go on it too much length, but my, um, I, uh, as I, as I had previously stated, I'm, I find the, um, the testimony of the neighbors who say that they're already, um, facing what seemed to be unsafe conditions, leaving their driveways near the site. I took those concerns very, very seriously. And I don't think it's been established that this is, the project is safe as it was presented to us.
Thank you, Heidi, I appreciate that. All right, Neil Toman?
Thank, thank you, Neil. Thank them for their time and I would, I would vote to approve. Thank you.
All right, uh, Laura?
So I just want to say a few things. So as much as I feel that the applicant has done their due diligence, and I think that they've answered everything per what was requested. Uh, I also do believe that the applicant has taken some, a significant consideration to both the aesthetics, um, the integration of what they're going to be building into the framework and the landscape of the environment. However, I, similar to Heidi, I am very concerned about the safety concerns and also the neighbor and the surrounding neighbors. I know that, you know, it's not fair for this applicant. You know, to be penalized in any way, just due to the fact of, you know, taking on the whole issue regarding safety of the Route 9 corridor. you know, to be penalized in any way, just due to the fact of, you know, taking on the whole issue regarding safety of the Route 9 corridor. But we did ask numerous times with regard to the trucking. And I understand that they took some measures to suggest that they would limit the trucks. But, you know, they really didn't answer with our ongoing questions with regard to that. So my vote would actually be no, and I'll dissent on this one.
Okay, thank you, Laura. All right, let's go to Peter.
Um, I'm torn by this. You know, I think that the applicant really has addressed, as well as they could, the, you know, foretelling what's going to be happening with their site. And I don't feel comfortable saying no to them, so I would say yes, I would approve.
Dennis?
I would vote yes, or I vote yes, based on the approval DOT.
Okay, thank you, Dennis. Kim?
I agree with Peter. I think they've, you know, come back to us with everything we've asked for, with explanations. I, I do think that this hopefully will, you know, relax some of the burden on this, the other site that belongs to this owner. And one of the things that we consider when we consider these applications is what the benefit is to the town. And I do think that that will be a benefit. I agree with Laura that I, I think that the design is certainly something that, you know, one would like to see. You know, something that's a little more quality than, you know, big metal box. So, you know, I vote to approve.
All right, thank you. So I have a question first for, I can't, I think it's for Steve. Steve, when we met last time, we were talking about the corridor, I think we discussed sending a letter to the town to start raising this issue of Route 9, is that correct? I don't remember exactly, am I included?
I thought I prepared that letter.
Did we send it?
I don't know. I thought I sent a draft to you.
Okay, well, that sounds like it's my fault, then. So I will, if you could resend it, and then I guess is it, the, the order of operations is for me to email it, or Kelly, for you to send it in after I sign it? So Steve resend it to me, I will then sign it and send it over to Kelly to get to the town. Because I, I think this burden we face is a board in applying the letter of the law with the spirit. Applying our judgment to, to rules is a difficult one. Route 9 is a difficult road. It is a difficult road, and is becoming increasingly difficult. And yet the applicant, I do, in my, my opinion, believe has tried somewhat to abide, to abide by our concerns. I still have concerns about the size of trucks and the frequency of them. But I do, do believe they are abiding by the general outline of what the zoning code states. And therefore, I don't feel like we have a lot of levers here. I do want to say thank you to Heidi and to Laura. I think it means a lot. This board is almost entirely unanimous in its votes, and I think it takes a lot of courage to state your opinions. We are not machines, we're not rubber stamps, we're not, we're not a, we're not a professional process. We are intentionally volunteers because we're, we're asked for our viewpoints and our opinions. And I think it matters, you spoke and spoke clearly and eloquently about that. I will vote yes in support of this. But I think we have a emerging problem on Route 9 that needs, needs attention.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Glenn, thank you, the applicant, thank you, everyone, for the board, for a very thoughtful, very extensive discussion over many months on this topic. Okay, last one is Riverview. Glenn, do you have comments to bring to us?
Yes, and just let me get this thing up on my screen. And I'll share it if that's okay.
Go for it.
What I can report to you is that we were back to the conservation board. We hashed out the changes in the plans that we had, that we had made between our first visit to the conservation board and our most recent visit. Most specifically, it was the replacement of a fence and a curb. We replaced it with a concrete block, a ready rock wall, of those large concrete building blocks. I would say that I can, I can say that that was well-received and thought of as a better, better solution. We did talk about the surface of the property of the ground, and they have agreed that the Millings will be okay. We talked about a couple of minor, minor things as specifying on the plan that we would identify a place where used parts would be kept in a trailer or, or in a, in a, at a very discreet and isolated spot. We agreed that the owner would participate in a restoration of the wetlands to the back of the parking lot with, with, with Mr. Garfinkel, so that, that, that part of the wetlands that's been most disturbed would be restored. There was some concern with regard to oil spillage on the site. We have, had previously specified an oil separating catch basin up in this northeast corner. And we, I suggested, and that, and the owners agreed, that we, we'd keep oil spill kits, two oil spill kits on the site. And basically, they're a big barrel full of stuff to absorb oil or to block it and that kind of stuff. It's, and so there, so we would keep those on the site. And so we came out of the, and, and Mr. Garfinkel was there. So we came out with Mr. Garfinkel having been given a direction to write a letter report to the board. I don't know if you've gotten it yet. And on the other end of it, we have met with, I think maybe I told you this last month, but I'll tell it again. We've met with the DOT, we know the parameters of their, of what they're looking for in terms of an exit. We are, obviously, we have a very uncontrolled exit with people coming in and out over, over all, a wide swath of the property. But with the curbs and the paving and the, and building the curbs that we're going to do, we will correct that situation. And we're about to make the plans up to make the application to the DOT for highway entry, where highway work permit. I know that you need, you still haven't gotten, or like, I don't think you've gotten Mr. Garfinkel's report. But I think we've gotten to the point where I would respectfully request that you schedule a public hearing on this matter.
Okay, Ron?
Yep, the, I have no objection if the board wishes to schedule a public hearing. But I can report that I did speak with Max Garfinkel earlier today. And Max's recollection of the seat, conservation board meeting was such that they were expecting to see revised plans from Glenn Watson's office to clarify and confirm the modifications that Glenn has just reviewed to make sure they were satisfying, satisfactory and in keeping with what the conservation board had requested. So until I receive those revised plans, they're not prepared to issue a letter back to the planning board. I did make it clear to Max that the board would likely not be ready to move forward with any action on the application unless and until they got a letter from the conservation board expressing their support of the latest environmental protections being offered.
Yeah, Glenn, I would, I would say, Glenn, can you hear me? Okay, I would say, Glenn, your, your recitation of the asks of the conservation board are different than what was in the November 13th letter from them. And I also spoke with Max, I think it was last week. And so I, I, I would like to get resolution because I feel like there's a, there's a bit of a difference between, you're mentioning a wall of a certain style as opposed to this chain link fence. Sounds like you mentioned barrels of a material as a, as opposed to a catch basin, which was.
No, I'm sorry, not as opposed to a catch basin, in addition to a catch basin.
All right, good, good. That's helpful. So I'd like, look, in my opinion, I'd like to get, I'd like to have the most up-to-date plan possible before we go. I think you can remove the picture from the screens, we can go full screen, please. My opinion would be, I'd like to wait till we have the full plan before we have a public hearing. The public has the most current information possible. That's my opinion. I don't know, Steve, if you want to comment?
I agree with your analysis. The only thing I'd add is, and maybe I missed it, wasn't the applicant going to respond to the sidewalk comments? Was, was that submission made?
We revised the plans. I don't believe I wrote a letter, a specific letter to it, revised the plans in, in response to those comments.
Maybe that's the confusion. I thought there was gonna be something addressing, you know, how the plans met the, met the comments. Ron, are you satisfied with that?
No, as you say, typically is some documentation in response to those sidewalk comments, just for the record. That remains to be done.
So Glenn, if you could just submit that along with the, you know, getting whatever it is we need to get from the CB, I think then we'll be in a position for a public hearing, but I don't think yet.
All right, board, board discussion, Kim's got her hand up.
So I, I'd like to know what the, what the entrance is gonna look like before we have a public hearing. You know, I'd like to have some, you know, explanation of that. Is that, you know, we just spent all this time with CRS talking about trucks going in and out. And in this particular case, we even have trucks that are going across the road. And so I, I think it's really important that we address that.
You, you want to see what, I don't understand exactly what you're saying. You want to see what it's gonna look like? What does that mean?
No, I'm sorry. So you said that you were waiting on a permit from the DOT and that the entrance was going to be revised in some way.
No, I said, we met with the DOT, and we were preparing a plan to make a submission. But in terms of its alignment, it's, it's, it's on the plan right now.
So what, what would be different about what you're submitting to the DOT than what we have? If you're preparing.
They would be, the, the plan view would be virtually identical. There's additional information, there's site line profiles, and there's other, there's other information that, that's required as part of their application, which we would submit.
And is there a reason that we don't need to see that? I mean, like, that, that wouldn't mean anything to us, so.
Well, I, I'm happy to share that with you. It's just, you're, it's, you know, for, for 35 years, you've issued permits subject to getting a, well, I guess I'm gonna say for 43 years, you've issued permits subject to the issuance of a, of a highway work permit. And, and we've always handled that afterward.
Okay, so, so what you're saying is that the, what we have now in terms of what the entrance, how the entrance will be, is, is sufficient to show us what the entrance will be? That's not gonna change, you're telling me?
Right now, there's no plan to change it. We've selected what we believe to be the, the best place in terms of its location on the frontage. I can't say to you that DOT will come back to us and say, well, do this and do that, or, you know, just like you do.
Okay, so I, I guess I just would like the public to be able to see what, what the entrance, how, a drawing of how the entrance will be. So if what we have is what you think, you know, will be, then that's adequate for the public. I just wanted to make sure, because I just, I misunderstood what you were saying when you said you were preparing something to send to the DOT. It made it seem like it was something different. You know, like that there would be some material difference. But if there isn't.
No, there's, no, there's, there, there will be additional information, and we'll share that with you.
Okay, Laura, go ahead, please.
So I'd like to add to Kim, but also I'd like to add to, just ask a question to Ron. So Ron, I thought at the walkthrough, there were a couple of things that we had mentioned. So one was how the applicant was actually going to operate. So as the trucks were parked on one side, and then they do the work on the other side, weren't we gonna contact the applicant to say, like, how are you gonna move the trucks from the parking lot to the repair area on the other side of Route 9?
I seem to recall it, I don't have that memorandum in front of me to see whether that was picked up or not. There's a reason I typically send you those, those memos as a, as a draft in the hope that you'd identify anything I might have missed or did not hear.
Okay, sorry, then I'll do that next time. But yeah, I think that that's something that we should probably try to get from the applicant, just so that we can actually present that to the public. And to Kim's point, you know, I agree. You know, we've just kind of thoroughly reviewed CRS. And I do know that when we were at the site and we looked, I do believe that there's this curve that goes southbound on Route 9. And there was some concern that if a truck was gonna be turning into the parking lot, that there was this blind spot, and that we wanted to talk through the vegetation, what that entrance was gonna look like. So I thought that that would all be also presented or, and or somehow documented, so that that could be reviewed?
Well, we'll turn it into you when we turn the states, the stuff into the state. There's, there's no secret. With, I've not seen Ron's memo, and you'll recall that I overslept that morning, so I apologize.
All right, I'll forward you the memo here, but I, I think you're getting, I'll let other board members continue, but I think you're getting the sentiment that we're not ready for a public hearing till we have a more complete and or near final package to represent to the public. So that, I think that is the sentiment. Other board members disagree or want to pile on to that same message, go ahead, please. Heidi, go ahead.
I had a question about, I think it was in the memo, but I recall from the site visit that we, someone noted that, probably Ron, that the site had been, had, had a violation, some sort of sanction against it by the town for unauthorized activities. And I don't, I don't recall if we ever found out whether there's any consequences of that.
Well, the consequences are, and I'm not, I am not being flip here. The consequences of that is that he's gotten sent to the planning board to get this straightened out and get site plan approval. And that's what we're.
And that's the only consequence? That's all that happens?
Well, it's typically what happens with a zoning violation. The, the applicant is given a period of time to, to, to get the site plan approved and, get any corrective actions approved, and, and that's what we're pursuing. So I, in generally speaking, as long as he's, he's making regular appearance and making progress through the board, the courts will just stay, any further action on the matter is what you could typically expect will happen. So we're making, we're making our, we're, we're working our way through.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions? Okay. All right, so we're not gonna take an action tonight. We will hopefully see that information go to, go to the conservation board in the intervening couple of weeks. Max can then send his letter, and then we can schedule a public hearing. The sentiment of the board? Okay, all right, I'll, as a final comment before we adjourn, just want to remind the public who's listening that 9:30 AM Sunday, this Sunday, which is January 21st?
24th?
24th.
24th, Mr. Glenn Watson will be touring us across the Garrison Golf Course in some semblance of an orderly fashion. We don't know how many people are joining us, but Glenn, we're all gonna meet at the parking lot, is that correct? The golf course parking lot, yes?
Of course, the, the parking lot in front of the restaurant.
Obviously, COVID protocols are in effect. Please wear your mask, please stay six feet apart. We expect that, and I will enforce that. Glenn is gonna bring a bullhorn, so depending on the size of the crowd. Dennis, check the weather, it's gonna be cold, so bundle up, but hopefully it won't be snow. And then we will have a special meeting a week from today at 7:30 Thursday, January 28th, where we're gonna get together and talk about the board's observations of its site visit. As, as Steve said at the beginning, it is not the intention to have a public comment to that, although I think if some incident moves a board member to feel like they want to call on someone, Steve said that is within our purview. Steve said that is within our purview, but did not describe that as best practice. And so my intention is not to call a member of the public to speak, because that feels like we're doing the public hearing before the public hearing. But if someone has a particular reason why they want to call on someone, we can certainly entertain that at that time, according to Steve's viewpoint. Uh, any questions about, uh, Sunday or next Thursday? Okay, Kelly, you're gonna have, uh, the, the team send out the link for the panelists for next Thursday?
Yes.
And, um, with that, uh, I'd like the motion to, any questions on the site visit or on the meeting? Anything? Okay.
I, I have one question, um, which is really about planning board business. Um, I, I'm just wondering, Kelly, if you know if they've, um, found anybody yet?
I'll, I'll answer that.
I was gonna say, it's Bob.
We're having a meeting tomorrow. We're having a meeting tomorrow to, uh, select that person. We interviewed everyone last week and, uh, tomorrow, we're having a meeting and reviewing everything again and making the selection.
So are we gonna see Kelly again?
Um.
Next week, but after next week?
I would think definitely next week and it all depends on when this new person can, can start, uh, interview process. Most people need to give two weeks notice. This person, I don't think, needs to give two week notice that we're gonna select. I'm not gonna say who that person is at this particular time, uh, because we have to approve it first. Yeah, I would definitely think Kelly would be at next week's meeting.
Good, so we don't have to say goodbye yet.
Probably be up to, I'm sure the following month, that new person will be in place, but we'll have to probably do some transition. So I would think Kelly would be at that meeting too. And then, you know, get things transitioned to this new person.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you for that, Kim. Alright, Kim, a motion adjourned, please.
Make that motion.
Alright, Peter, thank you, second.
Alright, everybody, good night.
Alright, have a good night, all in favor, aye, good night. Steve, send me that thing, thank you, bye guys.
Take care.
Bye, have a good night.
Bye, everybody.
Bye now.